Order, order. I'd like to call Monday, August 19, 2024, City Council meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Bill Rye for the Pledge of Allegiance. All councilors are present. Kim Holmes is remote. Everyone else is in person. Looking over the agenda, take a second. Thing I'd like to maybe bring up is on number eight, executive session. We had put that in there as a play saver for any labor negotiation updates. I don't really think there is much to update at this time. So I'm willing to look at scratching that from the tonight's agenda. If somebody really wants to have an update. If they want to have it individually, they can reach out to Dave on their own. But with that, I'm looking for an approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President Miller.
I move that council adopt the agenda with the removal of executive session.
Motion to accept tonight's consent agenda, removing number eight executive session. Any seconds?
A second.
By Council Bailey. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Any public comments? Any online? Hey, this is where we would have had public comment, but seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Today's consent agenda consists of August 5th, 2024 executive session minutes and August 5th, 2024 City Council meeting minutes. You look at those, I'm looking for a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Mayor.
Councilor Jacobs.
Aye, so move consent agenda.
I'd like Council Jacob to accept tonight's consent agenda. Any seconds? Second, my Council Santiago. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Tonight, we have a special presentation, and I'd like to call up interim Police Chief Chris Blueell in here to present this.
I will join you.
Stay close to this so people online can hear us as well.
So on March 31st, 2022, there was a work at Grumpy's Towing, and there was a gentleman that was wanted for murder that came into my shop and yeah, recognized him, got state police en route. And when the bullet started flying, I got a text from Timmy Sue. She must have heard it on the scanner and text me to make sure everybody was all right down there, down at the shop. So I called her and while everybody was in the shootout, I was fairly safe in the office and she was at my back and was talking me through the whole thing. And then when the end fight was finally done and I collapsed, she was in my ear the whole time, making sure that I knew I was going to be all right and she talked to me until the state troopers came in. And later that day, she continued to text that if I needed anything, she'd be there in a minute to take care of me. And I've worked closely with Timmy Sue when she was at the county, the tow company, and she came to Scappus and she didn't need to call and check in on me, but she did. And she continued to make sure I was all right through the whole ordeal, which was a really big deal to me. So I got ahold of Lieutenant at the time, Blueell, and asked if there was any way we could something in her file or do something that everybody knew what a impressive worker she was, that it didn't just have to be what she was doing at the office. She paid attention to the community and the people around, and she went above and beyond and made a big deal, big difference for me.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. Want me to read that out?
Yeah.
Okay, come on down. "Special recognition of Timmy Sue Hald for her dedication, her dedicated service to Scappus community and for her actions on March 31st, 2022, while helping console a fellow, a fellow community member during a critical incident involving our partners at Grumpy's Towing. We thank you, Timmy Sue, for your outstanding work and service." Appreciate it. Thank you. Hey. Everyone to top tonight.
Seriously.
Meeting is over.
Hey, Charlotte, it's this one for you to top. Hey, we have on-call electrical services contract, Charlotte Baker. Lead. Thank you, good.
I just wanted to make sure this was on, but I think it is. Um, yeah, that is really hard to, hard to follow up. So this is not quite as fun or heartwarming. I have a contract approval for you all for on-call electrical services. These Public Works wastewater and water department use electrical services fairly often. And the city already has several on-call contracts for services that we use often. Towing is one. The police department has a towing contract. Public Works has on-call water service contracts. So staff felt that it made sense to have an on-call contract for electrical services, especially when things come up in the middle of the night and it's an emergency and, you know, you need someone to respond right away to provide all city services like the wastewater treatment plant or water treatment plants. Um, so city staff from Public Works wastewater and water departments work together to create a scope of work that would encompass all possible electrical needs. And while cost was definitely the most important factor, it wasn't the only factor. We wanted to make sure that we got someone on board who, you know, was cost effective, but also could actually perform the service. You don't want a fly-by-night electrician working on your wastewater treatment plant. It's basically the concern. So with that, we chose to publish a request for qualifications as opposed to an ITB because that allows us a little bit more leeway in deciding who we want to contract with. And if you publish an invitation to bid, you're required to choose the lowest bidder. Unless there's some sort of egregious, you know, they certainly can't fill your needs, but other than that, you're required to choose the lowest bidder. So city staff also developed an evaluation criteria. Some of it was just met, not met. For example, whether the submission substantially complies with the requirements, that was just a pass, no pass. And understanding of the city's needs and requirements, again, pass, no pass. Cost of services was 70% of evaluation criteria. Again, we wanted to encourage competitive prices. And then qualifications, background and experience and references were 15% respectively. The RFQ was published on July 15th. Bids were due August 8th. We received three submissions from Peak Electric, Hamer Electric and Christianson Electric. All three are groups that the cities worked with before and felt good about working within the future. Ultimately, Peak and Hamer were the winners and also the two least expensive. City staff felt that it was prudent to contract with two in situations where, for example, it's the middle of the night, you need someone to respond as soon as possible. When minutes are of vital importance, you want to make sure that your bases are fully covered. And so by contracting with multiple for the same service, you are ensuring that someone's going to be able to respond quickly and effectively. Excuse me. I've included the fee schedules. First, Hamer is the second one, and the third is obviously Christianson has their logo on it. Yeah, so we felt that the dollar value of the contracts was good. The, the, the prices were good. So city staff like to move forward with Peak and Hamer. And staff recommends that council authorized Acting City Manager Dave Sukka to enter into a contract with Peak Electric and Hamer Electric for the purpose of on-call electrical services.
My first question is, what exactly, when you're signing a contract, what are you proving or what are we signing that the fee structure is what the fees will be until the time of the contract expires or one here has each year they go up? So that's basically what you're signing, that we're setting their prices?
Yeah, you're signing a contract, you're agreeing upon the services based on their fee schedule or book, excuse me, you're signing a contract agreeing on the prices based on their fee schedule.
Two quick ones. For the, since you're looking for two, for redundancy aspect, are the fee schedules associated to the call or activity taken? Because you call one person, you don't get ahold of them, so you call the backup one, which makes perfect sense. Does the call itself count as one hour or is it actual activity takes place? Because I've been in contracts that go either way, event or action.
I, I might answer, but.
No, that would be on services provided. If they can't make the call, then they're not gonna, it's not like an employee who we'd be calling out who would be on call.
Okay.
If they can't, yeah, if they cannot provide, we don't pay.
Cool. All right. And it's hourly increment or like 15-minute increment, hourly increment? Okay.
The exception of the markup is the only one that's not an hourly rate.
Yep.
I appreciate the process of evaluation committee. That's great. I think you should have a lot of time. Sorry, can you hear me? My question is, if Christianson did provide a multi-year, is there fee here? Because it only says 145 and doesn't say, is it? Is it you, you did have, it says multi-year. Exactly how many years? Is it two years, three years contract? And are they sticking to this price in the second year and the third year and so forth?
The contract is for three years.
For three years?
Yeah.
And so the three years, they're gonna stay with the one, say 145 per hour rate? No? Or are they gonna go up a percentage per year?
Yeah.
There's a pre-described 5% increase, at least on one of them. I don't, I don't remember what the other one was. So Christianson did definitely have the most thorough proposal of the three. But they all prescribed what their rates would go up a year.
Okay, so it's, they did, just it's not in this document?
Correct.
So is it 5% you said, Dave? Each year?
That was for.
The, and, and Christianson's is similar to that same 5%, but they just listed them out.
Didn't do the math on it, but.
152 to 161 is.
About.
Yeah.
10% would be $15.
Yeah.
And then, um, who just, who decides whether it's a journeyman electrician or an apprentice comes out? Is that their call based on availability or is it us? Can we refer, ask?
It's their call because they have to be responsible for their work. They obviously can't do, they can't send an underqualified employee out to do something obviously that they're not licensed to do. At the end of the day, that employer is responsible for their employees. Typically, it's always a journeyman that comes out first. Apprentices come out as their secondary assistants. For the ones who are drilling the holes or doing whatever ahead of the journeyman electricians who's actually connecting the wires.
Yes, Council.
Thank you. Question. So how to a volume that you anticipate call electrician? Like, what is the, what has your past utilization been?
It's random. There's, there's, you know how they always say things come in threes? I swear, that's kind of true. So we'll get a wave of it. Like with the weather event on Saturday, we had an electrical panel short out because somehow water got into it. So it's just random, whether it's an act of God or just a circuit breaker might fail and then we need to get that. And as you all know, we're 24/7 operations. We can't afford to be down waiting for Monday for somebody. That's why this is so critical because by them signing on this document, they've guaranteed that they're gonna be there for us. So it's reassurance both ways that we know somebody's gonna pick up the phone. And then by having the secondary, you also have that redundant. They don't. You've got somebody to go to backup.
What's the time lapse, just out of curiosity, since you're having the redundancy, like how much time do you allow the first vendor to respond before you pick up the phone and call the second vendor?
Is that 30 minutes? I think we give 30 minutes to call us back and we're moving on. If they don't do that, and then they've got 90 minutes, I think, to get.
To show up, to actually show up, yeah.
These again are for on-call services. So like if, like the solar panels, the solar charges, if we needed to hire a company to do a whole bunch of wiring, that's separate. You go out.
A big capital project will go traditional bidding. This, this won't preclude that. If, if it's a sizable project, we're gonna put it up to bid and publish to a broader audience. Especially when there's materials to be purchased. The other thing that is in here, just I wanted to point out, is markup was another factor. You look at the prices, it was a 10, a 15 and a 20% markup. That factored in big to us too, because a lot of this stuff isn't just labor, but it's the materials that you're buying. So that was, that was a big factor for us. Your question?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President, President.
I move that council authorize Acting City, excuse me, I move that council authorize the Acting City Manager to enter into a contract with Peak Electric Group and Hamer Electric for the purposes of on-call electric services.
Motion to authorize Acting City Manager Dave Sukka to enter into a contract with Peak Electric Group and Hamer Electric for the purposes of on-call electrical services. Any second?
Second.
Council of the Friends, any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Hey, now we are moving into a joint work session with our Parks Department, Parks and Rec Committee. Joined today by J.J. Durin in Holsworth. They're here with us. We have Acting City Manager and Doug Nassenbeam. Acting City Manager Dave and Public Works Director, hats today, Dave Sukka will take the lead on this.
All right, good night, or good evening, Mayor, Council. Not good night yet. So at the conclusion of the Parks Master Plan, we talked about having this session where we would typically have the Parks Committee and Council talk about the amenities. And so here we are tonight to do that. There's a PowerPoint on the screen that we can walk through together. Get your packet if you don't want to. Hey, you want to go to the next slide? So in March of this year, we adopted the Parks Master Plan, as I'm sure all of you recall. In that master plan, there was a CIP list, which is the first couple of slides in there. It identifies the amenities for each of the parks. This combined list equals $8.1 million worth of amenities. We know that's not something we can afford in our lifetime. So what we did is we worked with the Parks Committee to dial this back. At any point, this is open dialogue. If you want to go back to any of these, please just interrupt and let's do it. Otherwise, I'll just walk through mentally how we, so what we did is we worked with Parks Committee to go back through the parks one by one and think through them with the layout of the property, the things that are already there, what makes sense, what doesn't make sense. And this is collectively what we came up with. For heritage, basically game tables was a big topic, just adding small amenities that people could utilize while there. It's obviously not a large park. And it has amphitheater, believe it or not, designed into it. The lawn is slightly sloping towards the gazebo. So it is somewhat elevated as people move away from it. So that was one of the ideas that you'll see in that CIP originally designed. We acknowledge that it's already there. So we just kind of scratched that and on with that. Veterans, we talked about pickleball courts, a new play structure that would be ADA compliant, which is a council goal. And then also we've been working towards the bridge to Concomly from Veterans Park. Then Grabhorn, obviously building that park as a whole and designing what amenities would be in it, which we'll be talking about here in a little bit. Concomly is a very, would say, well-built out park and not a need for a whole lot of amenities there other than the bridge. And we have talked about different ways to utilize the lower portion of the park down by the creek. There's been talk from things as little as porshoe pits to nature gardens and different things. We just have to be aware of the floodplain criteria that's down there. So you can't build much. But amenities that won't impede the water flow would be fine. Miller Park, that one is a hidden gem for us. I think there's a lot of things down there. It's a beautiful little park. We're working to slowly add more trees. I would like to add the sidewalks and ADA compliant components of it, benches. There's very little of that. I think that we could look at putting another picnic shelter down there. We get a lot of birthday parties at that location. Improvements to the basketball court is the only basketball court that we currently have within the city. So there's things that we could do there as well. Creek View is an unimproved park. I don't know if all of you have ever been to it. Kind of majestic little park. Shortly after I hired on, I got a phone call one day. A gentleman asked, when are you gonna mow Creek View? And I hadn't even seen it yet. I'm like, Creek View? I'm not familiar with that one yet. So he walked me through and it was actually where him and his wife go down there and celebrate their anniversary every year by the creek. And he wanted to know if he needed to go mow it. So I spoke with Doug. I'm like, we need to get this done. This is important. So it's, it's just a very majestic, quiet place to go hang out. CZ Trail, I think everybody understands the dynamic of that and its popularity more by the day. And we are working on that currently to do improvements as far as trees and vegetation with Scappus Bay watershed. Our crews have been working to mow and maintain as much as possible. We've talked about, and we can get into this in a little bit, some exercise equipment along the trail. So as you're running or walking, you could pull over and do a couple exercises or some. There's just a multitude of amenities that we could do with that. Chapman Landing, obviously another diamond in the rough. We've been working to clean and clear down there. And at some point, hopefully, we'll do some bigger amenities. It's a challenged location with dike. There's very little things that we can physically build there, but we could put in. Right now, we're doing porta-potties for restrooms, but we could look at maybe a pit toilet, some sort of parking out by the road or something along those lines at some point. A kayak dock, we've had talks about and different things. Actually met with J.J. down there. We talked about that.
Were the porta-potties gone for a little bit?
They were. We had one get blown up by some fireworks and Hudson came and removed it and refused to bring back. So it was a struggle for us. We've actually had to switch toilet companies because Hudson just stopped servicing us and wouldn't bring any back. So we now have a new supplier for that. So yes, we were without, but that's been reestablished. Uh, let's see, Commerce, we did get the driveway into that recently. Last month, we had an access built into it. So now we can start working with our Public Works crews to get a driveway down into it. We started mowing it this year for the first time. We've talked about, and once again, we can dive into that more here in a bit. More of a nature reserve field out there. We could put in some pathways, maybe out of wood chips or something that's eco-friendly. Other than that, I think the consensus has always been nature-based items out there. Then obviously Vista. Haven't done anything with it there. We're challenged because of the location for parking. It's obviously open to the public for hiking and mountain biking if they want, but there's no established trails or trailhead at this time. It's really about what we came up with on that list. What we're hoping to accomplish tonight is to have councils concurrents with either this list or some prioritization, or we just talk about what our next steps are gonna be. As we all know, funding is limited for the Parks Department, and I'm not seeing that getting any better for a few years until we come up with some other funding mechanisms. Or just plan on a slow, slow build. I mean, we're not park deprived. We have very beautiful parks. I think comparatively to other cities within the county, I'm very proud of them. But obviously, we always want things to be better. We'll continue to work to strive for that.
So Dave, can you share with us, and we talked about the budget, we had a really healthy conversation today about the budget. Can you share with Council, like, how much money we have at disposal this year that we could spend and kind of walk us through different line items and you also kind of share your perspective?
So our parks is operating, I didn't bring the exact dollars with me, but our parks operates on around $600, $650,000 a year averaged over the last few years. It equates to 10% of the general fund money. And so of that, we have been over the last two years budgeting to, well, okay, last fiscal year, we budgeted $50,000 towards the savings for building future parks. This year, we upped that to 100. So in the budget is a combined 150,000 set aside right now for future park development under council-approved projects. In the capital side of things, we also budgeted 75,000 for improvements for equipment. 25 of that was the driveway that we put into the Commerce Park. 50,000 is for whatever we determined, which at this point has been nothing. Wanted to wait and get through tonight's discussion before we determine how or if we're gonna spend that this year. And there was another item in there for 55,000 this year for Parks Equipment. It's for a new subcompact tractor and a new zero-turn mower. We have purchased both of those. Received them about two weeks ago. And we're gonna be developing more use for those. The compact tractor has a sweeper attachment for the front. Did purchase a snow blower, although we don't get a lot. When we do, it'll be nice to have because when we do intersections and sidewalks at e-locations in town, this machine will be able to go in there and remove that snow quicker. We think it's gonna make things much safer for people. That's where we're at. So that's about the capital budget that we have right now is 2 to 250 for capital investments. The rest is for operations and maintenance of that. So about 400,000, give or take yearly. That's kind of where we're at. I mean, there's, there's not a lot. If we continue to save, 100 aside every year, you know, you can do the math and figure out where we're gonna be. When we had the Grabhorn discussion several months ago now, I think Grabhorn came in at like $3.9 million and obviously at $100,000 a year, it's gonna take a long time to get there. But we will switch gears and talk about that in more detail here in a minute as well. Does that give you enough context on budget?
Yeah. So just, yeah, I just want to make sure everyone had that understanding of where we're at financially. And just kind of looking at the numbers, we have 150 that we're saving, like we're building. So when I, when I look at the money, it really kind of seems to me that we have like 50,000 we wanted to spend. When you go through the CIP list, a lot of things that we want to do are very expensive. We might be able to do a few small improvements here and there with 50,000. But to Dave's point, like he's talking about like saving 100,000 a year. If, if you kind of stayed on that path a little bit, it would help move us closer to having a bigger amount to do a bigger project. And then you couple that with grant funding. Might be able to, money would go a lot further for consideration. So.
50, but I, okay, just 2 to 250. So is it 150 we have and save 100?
We have 150 in savings. It, I, I mean, we can spend it. But it's right now, it's in saving.
But collectively from the last two years, equates to 150 set aside right now. We would anticipate budgeting another 100 for next year and so on and so forth. Unless that pattern, for whatever reason, has changed. The other thing that we do collect fees on is SDCs. Every home that's built brings in just shy of $2,600. Those do go up incrementally every year with the cost of the construction index increases. But anyways, right now for every new home, I mean, brings in about 2,600 towards new park construction as well.
I have a question on that. But Councilor Holmes, you had a question?
Yeah, thank you. So thanks for laying this list out. I think it's kind of the first time we've seen the big picture view of where our priorities are across the parks and it's really helpful in terms of creating some prioritization. Dave, have we thought about where private contributions might fit into this? So for example, I think I was down in Banden, Oregon, maybe last year. And every lamp post, every bench, every brick, right? Like it had someone's name, it was sponsored. And so they were really, I mean, it looked like they were using a lot of private dollars to fund some of these amenities and infrastructure. Have we thought about how that can be leveraged and kind of where within these parks it might be most appropriate?
So leveraging that type of fundraising from a staff's perspective, as I understand, is always a taboo. I would be more of a, a committee-type fund or, you know, fundraising act. It wouldn't be a staff-driven thing. JJ wants to weigh in?
So I'm JJ Duran, Vice Chair of Scappus Parks. A big money savings that happened this last year was me volunteering, taking on all the events that we've done this past year that have all been incredibly successful. A big part of that success is partnering with stakeholders. So reaching out to the library initially, when Mike Sykes approached me to do movies in the park, proved to be a really fruitful partnership. And, and also reaching out to other stakeholders like the Bird Alliance, formerly Portland Audubon Society, Next Adventure, PCC. You know, it's, it's that idea of, of getting more community members involved in parks that goes beyond simply a budget that helps parks to thrive. And, and I believe that, that is something that I've been very effective in doing. And I believe that that's going to be the key. Short of us creating a Parks and Recreation District where we're getting real continuous tax dollars to actually fund and improve parks. You know, I mean, the truth is, is that by taking on doing the Outdoor Festival this year, you know, that was $90,000 less than what the city had paid in previous years for that type of a thing. So I also think too that it's important not to take advantage of, of, I mean, we need to be mindful of these people spending a tremendous amount of time helping us. You know, every night at movie night, sometimes those movies don't get out until about 11 o'clock. And it's usually Jeff, my husband, and maybe a couple of volunteers that are helping. So it, it's, the other thing you want to be careful about with volunteers is not burning them out. I think that's really important. But, you know, the other thing about strategic partnerships is thinking about what is the win for the other person? When I had approached the Scappus Police Department about doing burgers and hot dogs for Movies in the Park, we really needed people that were good at that, but the police are so much more than that. And by having them involved every week at Movies in the Park and having that presence, that also takes off the responsibility of them trying to come up with events and promotions for their own organization to do outreach. Because I found that giving out dollar burgers and hot dogs really gets people excited about the police department. And they also do a great job. Timmy Sue, this last week alone, we had Indiana Jones and the Temple of Destiny or Dial of Destiny. And anyway, she created these little gold boxes with, with toys in them. And it's, it's like people get really excited about that. So it's creating that excitement and getting that buy-in from the community that ultimately makes these, these things, you know, thrive. And with Vista Park, I mean, I had a number of people approach me that wanted to contribute money to help improve Vista Park so that it would stay a park. So, you know, I'm not a, an expert in parks, but I'm an expert in working with people and, and building community. And I think that's really going to be the approach that really helps us to thrive with parks and create a better identity for the city.
I don't know, Kim, if that is quite what you were asking, though. I think you were looking for more donor-based or something along those lines.
I think I said that.
Usually, I'm staying in big picture here.
Okay.
Like, so for the development of a park, somebody would have to probably come forward to us and propose to donate, which the Kiwanis did with the fountain. That was a larger project. We would, we would need somebody just to come forward, make that recommendation. We did have one member of the community reach out to me a while ago and wanted to donate some money to the CZ Trail, but they wanted to have the trail recognition switched over into their name and get the credit for the trail. I told them that wasn't a decision that I was comfortable with. I would want that to come before council and they elected not to go forward with that. But they wanted it to be the so-and-so memorial trail kind of thing. And I just, I didn't feel comfortable that that would be the direction we would want to go. So not considering we would have to continue to do the maintenance.
What do you get in ways of somebody wanting to come with $50,000 towards the pickleball court? If we named it after their, you know, Gregram or something, then that means we only have to come up with 25. I mean, is that something then you'd bring to us?
In something like that where it's a, a contribution to the build, yes, then it makes sense. But to just throw, you know, five or $10,000 into a fund and say, I'm donating it to the trail. Well, then you need to put a term on that kind of an agreement. Whereas when you fund the building of something, you get credit for life. The Little League paid to put in all the backstops at the ball fields, you know. So they, that's why we work with them for lifetime to give them first rights to use those fields. So yes, there's availability of opportunity for partnerships. We just, other than the fountain, I don't instruct that.
I'm just to follow a lot along with what saying. I also, I think we talked about part of the committee once, when I was in the committee, talked about maybe like the brick. Like, I think that's what Kim is saying, like.
Yeah, exactly. Yes.
It's also, I think, what about sponsoring? Why don't we, as a committee or as an organ city, as a community, sponsor a park? And then we really dedicate on working, for example, we decide to go with veterans. It's, it's work on veterans and then sponsor a park and then really work on everything and then just tackle one at a time. And then if somebody does want to contribute and want their recognition, we can always create a plaque and see all the families and contributions that, that, you know, that they're funding the park together. I don't know. I mean, there's different ways that we can get this done. So my question is that, did you want us to pick items? Or is the committee going to be selecting items for, say, the 50,000 or 150,000 that we choose to spend? Or are we deciding how much we want to spend?
This could go a multitude of ways. You could, you could give us the guidance and say, we would like to move forward with small amenities and here's what we're thinking. That would give us direction to move forward. You could say, let's, let's not do anything but build a pickleball court. And we'll put all of our efforts into building that as soon as possible. There, that's why we're here. This is just purely open discussion to, to come up with a consensus of the direction we're going. Not necessarily the exact plan or however.
I would love to hear recommendations from each one and see how closely they're aligned and maybe we can tweak it a little. Just to see what page we're on, where we all think. Question I do have, SDC fees, $2,600 a house, that basically go into a fund to fund parks?
It's the SDC fund that's in our budget.
So let's say, Dutch Canyon Four, we already received those $100,000. That's roughly 2,600 times 38 homes.
Those funds come in when the permit fees for construction of the home are collected.
So we can kind of look at, they might even been put in the budget because I'm sure some of these SD fees were estimated. So Grabhorn, Hughes Estates, there might be some money that goes in there then on top of what in the budget. But it's in that 400,000 you're.
Or Community Development Office does their best guess based on projections of what they think might come in in the upcoming year. And so we do factor that into the revenue side of the budgets. That is factored in, but there's no guarantee to it.
You may have some more money in there, but I do agree, I'm really torn on some smaller projects, especially with grants. If we can match grants, if we can find the corporate companies that will give you $25,000, if we match it with ours to build something that benefits, that's free money. We, we should really look to pursue some of that and double our money.
I have no problem encouraging that. It's just not something that staff would go out and beat on people's doors asking for.
And, and I would further, just, just to interject, I would further recommend too that we have to be very mindful when we do these partnerships, that it doesn't turn into a commercial enterprise. You want it to be tasteful. And I think Dave was spot on when somebody wanted the trail named after them, you know. And you also don't want it to be kind of a cemetery. So it's, 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 well, I mean, it's true. I mean, we really need to think about it. And we can, but we can also do very small things in memory of, of people like benches and picnic tables and having things, you know, put in such a way that it is really beneficial to users. On the CZ Trail, one of the things that I think would be really important is that not everybody, how long is the, the trail round trip? If you go all the way down to the, the water and back, Dave, do you know that offhand?
It's almost like three miles.
Yeah, no, our, our section.
Our section.
I think down and back is about three miles.
So, so that doesn't seem like much, but, but for some people, that's a real challenge. And so thinking about that and setting up benches or, or even little picnic tables where people can just kind of be and, and rest really makes a huge difference. I mean, when I was involved with the Main Street Program years back, that was a really, you know, it was this, this really important design idea that we think very mindfully about usage for everybody. Because there are a lot of people that can't walk three miles that would like to. Or if they, they can, they need to take a break every once in a while so they can hydrate or take care of themselves. But also when you're, when you're placing those benches, that there's also something that's beneficial, something visually interesting to the person or something, you know, that they can do. So, you know, it's, it's really about, it's about being very careful. And I think as, as I, as I've mentioned to council and to Dave, it's like if we do bring these opportunities that, you know, council and, and the city needs to review it to make sure that it's, it's a good thing.
Counselor Miller, then Counselor Holmes?
I just want to have a little bit more conversation about grants, just so we have had that conversation on the record and we can refer back to it. What is, so it's, I kind of have a two-part question. So can we just have a general conversation about grants? Whether it be grant funding from the state, from other organizations, not private individuals? And then have we kind of brainstormed already, I'm assuming that you have, on any way to, I don't know, can we use that $50,000 that Kim or that Rissa brought up, sorry, to potentially hire somebody to write grants if we know that they're available? I mean, what is the best ROI for that $50,000 to be able to make the biggest use of it and be able to get the most for our parks?
Well, there's more to this presentation. So before you kind of get everybody's senses here, you might want to go through the Grabhorn discussion and a few other things and then have that dialogue about that, but.
You have Counselor Holmes, you want to go? We'll go and get into that.
Yeah, I just want to kind of close the loop on the discussion of private donations. I, I think we have a, a very generous community. I think we saw that with the very quick fundraising that happened with the high school field. And it, it might benefit us to just create a formal process for people to kind of reach out and, you know, demonstrate or elect their interest in offering a private donation. You know, I could see a, a few families coming together and saying, you know, we got to get this pickleball court done. Like, let's, let's bring the money together and present that opportunity to the, to the city. So I don't know if there's a way to kind of create a formal process that would allow that, welcome that, advertise that opportunity. But that might be a good long-term benefit for the city.
We do have, there is one bench out on CZ Trail that's in memory of Gail Clovis. I don't know how that got started, who paid for that or how it was done. But if we did have, like you were saying, Kim, people that want to donate 2,000 and get a bench, a picnic table and with a little plaque on it. I mean, is there a way to set up people to donate for specific items?
Right now, those are coming in specific to the city. Right now, they're pending us getting locations figured out. There's two right now that want to be donated for Veterans Park. The problem is, is you can't just stick benches out there. You, you need to be strategic aware and how and make sure that they're compliant. So what we're looking at doing is trying to build the paths that they need to go on in-house or something, or figure out how to keep this affordable, because those benches are about $2,000 a piece. So that's a big donation. And so if we can figure out how Public Works could build the concrete sidewalk that it sits on, and then those people can donate. The other thing that's been problematic, though, and it wasn't as big a deal with CZ Trail because it doesn't have a vision. But if somebody was specific to here, Heritage Park, we have a vision. Like those, those benches are set in stone, no pun intended, as to what their artwork looks like and the certain style of it. The same thing with Concomly, there's a certain bench. That's what we require of those people is that this is what it needs to look like. Yes, you can purchase it and put it in memory of, no problem there. With CZ Trail, we hadn't got to that point. The bench was donated out there, so.
If we could develop a website or on our, on our website things, and as we add them, okay, we have this at Veterans that we want to put a picnic table, and you put a list of the ones that we're looking for sponsorship for, and people can choose. I want that one at Miller, I'll pay for it and we'll get it done and they'll donate and kind of pick and choose off the list that we set of where we want them and what we want and what it will look like.
Yep. And that, and that's really along the lines of what I'm thinking. Like, for example, the disc golf course. You know, if we say it's a nine-hole course, you know, could we say each hole, you know, could be purchased by a family? For example, just something that identified the need, gave them the opportunity to express interest in the donation and could, you know, leverage that collective fundraising potentially.
This is really great dialogue. Thank you, Counselor Holmes, for bringing that up. I think this is something we should put on our agenda to speak with our incoming city manager as something, what the feasibility is of putting together a, a site and doing some marketing around this. And I think that would be a really great partnership with the Parks and Rec Committee in terms of like fundraising and doing efforts like that. I think that would be a great partnership to help get that up and running. So that, that would be my recommendation. Let's put it on the agenda for the incoming city manager to explore and. But not get back to us on.
He definitely has some background and some different views and he's seen it, so he'd have some helpful, good information.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I would encourage you, though, to lock in this list until people, these are the amenities we're looking for.
Absolutely.
Rather than just having random.
Oh, absolutely. Oh, absolutely.
In my mind, we would list them and they would choose the ones that we've set aside. This is the design, this is where it's going to be. You know, they're not going to come and say, I want one here, here, here. No, it's be our list.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Want to stick a tetherball at Miller Park?
I, I think it's more, how do we get more of the things, not what things? How, how do we get this list and just get more checks on them?
Maybe we can get some of these smaller things done with maybe not our funds, with our funds. Going forward, yeah, I do, I mean, we do have that Grabhorn is a big project and we have to weigh and save and got that grant deadline coming up. And so that's important. We decide we want to pursue. What can we pursue? What can we get done? Or do we feel that we really want this disc golf? We want to try some of these smaller one, a pickleball court?
Are you ready to move on to that?
Well, I think, let me just, so I think part of when we were looking at Grabhorn and doing some of those things, it was a way to say, these are things that were, if I'm correct, that these are things that we're actually doing at Grabhorn so that we could qualify for that grant? Or am I missing something?
So just for a little history context, this is the original design that everybody kind of agreed on finally. It's got the sport courts to the south, the larger parking that incorporates into veterans. It's got the soccer slash, at one point, we talked about pool use with a softball field, but we ended up landing on just a flat surface that T-ballers could use, soccer people could use, whatever, for the moment to cut some costs with the parking lots in the wetlands. Moving forward, we had a discussion a few months ago where we landed on this was going to be somewhere shy of just $4 million and we decided we couldn't afford that. So we decided to dial that back to the next version, which is just basically a bare field with the reduced parking lot. The restrooms moved down to the north end. The restrooms moved down to the north end parking lot. We stayed out of the wetlands as much as possible, leveled out the field, um, but we don't really feel that this is enough to entice grant funding and not much for anybody to do on it. So uh, we had some discussions with the Parks Committee about coming up with some disc golf designs, and they did. And Ian, if you'd like to talk about your design, I'd love to have that.
Yeah, um, geez, we, uh, myself and former Parks Committee member Paul went out. So I did these rough sketches, um, generalizing kind of a very um beginner to very lightly intermediate um, uh, disc golf lengths of holes. Um, and to see how they could fit, um, not only with in Grabhorn, but we also looked, uh, if they could fit some on veterans as well, but we ultimately landed on this discussion here about Grabhorn. So you saw about, you can see five holes here, the white lines kind of represent holes. Um, it's very, it's pretty flat out there, so um it's not a overcomplicated course, but it would be one that families and other sort of people would really enjoy. Uh, but we did since go out and um kind of field verify this on our own. And we actually think we could probably fit nine holes in Grabhorn with a little bit of overlap onto the multi-use field. Um, so uh, this was the first attempt at saying, hey, let's get some excitement out there. Let's use this whole park for something uh that's an amenity we don't have in the city right now. It's an amenity we heard through the master plan planning process that the city uh uh the people that live here, I forget, I forget the word for that right at the moment. Citizens of the city uh would support. So we we think it's a it's a good intermediate way to to value use. What we've heard here today is not a large budget and get people on this park and get people excited about what the future could hold for the park.
This exhibit doesn't show it, but Ian actually designed even more holes that would play through the creek side of Veterans. Um, it's it's.
What is the orange?
Well, there is an exhibit that's got them kind of shown on another one. But anyways, what what you could do, though, is build upon this concept and play it through. And if we move forward with the bridge, which we'll talk about here in a minute, you could also incorporate this golf into Concomly and play across the creek. Really cool. Um, I've won a disc golf since the day I hired on here, and everybody I've ever talked to, I mentioned it. They're like, oh, my gosh, Scappus needs disc golf. I mean, so I think it'd be pretty well received.
I just, I want to answer your question. The the dark, the kind of bold orange lines you saw are just like buffer zones of places where people gather, where you want to keep discs away from.
Oh, keep it away.
The $10,000 price tag, is that based on a nine-hole course or these five-hole course? You have a budget in here on the list for disc golf, $10,000?
I I would not use that number for this. Um, I think you have some numbers you've.
I think I think we talked about minimum, you could get away with like $400 per net. And then if you wanted to build a concrete pad or something, you're talking 500, $500 each there. So nine holes, I would imagine you we could get, what we talked about was maybe putting something something in there a little bit temporary and get the momentum going. If people love it and enjoy it and the layout that we have works really good, then we could do some more permanence.
I think too, like you're talking with the bridge, I think when you can pair a couple of these together, the bridge will help this golf. The bridge could help a community garden. It could help other things too, where it's not just the bridge. I mean, it does multiple. And I think if you can incorporate some of this Grabhorn, I mean, I think you can get nine in there pretty well and pretty inexpensive. And it'd be a really good opportunity to see what people think, and it 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 maximizes, I think, that park a little more.
So what we've done is we've sent Ian's design over to 3J to incorporate it into the plan for the project, the official plan, which is what this exhibit is. Um, what we would like to do with your approval is to submit this as a part of the grant application. This would be the plan that would go with that. Charlotte did some research on that and does have some updated information. It sounds like that grant has changed and actually got more favorable for us.
Is this the matching, the the matching, uh, price matching?
Yeah, LGTP, yeah.
Oh, tell us about it. So, um, what makes us more favorable now?
I don't know, I, because I wasn't here when we last sort of discussed this, um, but it's apparently more favorable. So we only need to provide a 40% match. Um, because we're under 25,000 people uh in population. Um, they break projects down into grants um up to $100,000 and then grants from 100,000 to a million. A million's their cap. They they don't offer more. Yes, that is the downside. But 85, they budget 85% of their funds for um the large projects up to a million dollars, which obviously this would fall into. Um.
We could ask for a million.
Yes, you can ask for a million.
With our 750,000 matching, we're at no problem.
You're there.
So I see a good question. So the uh, uh, does that also include volunteer hours or or no? For the money? Okay.
The the purchase price would more than exceed the 40%.
I got you. Okay, perfect, okay.
We wouldn't need nothing.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Oh, you're you're, it could be, okay, we've got our 750, that's already paid for. We can get a million from the grant if we win. Then we put 250,000 or whatever from our budget over the next couple of years in. And then the matching, and you could get more amenities if you get closer to a bill.
You could. However, hot off the press today was the updated construction instrument for what you see with contingency is 1.79 or something like that, almost 1.9.
For that, that's digging the dirt out, doing some dirt work to get it level for future build.
That's that, yeah, that's everything there. That's pre-pregrading for the soccer field, that's building the disc golf, that's building the parking lot, that's putting in restrooms, that's putting in all the storm drainage and all of the frontage improvements along Smith Road.
You said pre-grade, so like the parking lot where the basketball court would go in the future, that's still not flat?
That up there is not. Only the soccer field. Now, we talked about disc golf as something that could easily be removed and not be a lot of wasted money should you ever build the sport court. Now, it could be 10 years from now, that could be maybe never. Maybe this is, this is what everybody loves. But that was part of the reason also in choosing the disc golf is that you could literally pick those up and go put them somewhere else. You're not really out any money other than the temporary or permanent paths that we would build to throw from.
Most of them are outside of the soccer fields. We wouldn't have to move them if.
You could continue to play along the creek, but just the ones that are where the sport court, those would have to be.
They will be strapped down, though, right?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they're they're the steel posts anchored into the ground. Yeah, they're they're permanent.
So if we were to pursue that and go for the grant, um, you would be putting it in by April, you would know sometime after that. You're still talking construction, still a good year away. Um, that would pretty much take all of our funds, get to the that 1.8. We'd have to be using all of our cash, all of our SDCCP, whole amount of the grant. Um, but we could qualify. There's enough of a park there. We could at least put a grant application.
Yes, and I, um, the grant um committee who approves, you know, the funds that are given out by the LGTP grant, um, they have prioritized certain things, um, and a lot of those match with what we have. Um, pathways is one of their priorities, pathways that connect public spaces to one another, which is, I mean, yeah, um, restrooms, actually, benches, very simple things. But I I thought when I was uh seeing to the webinar that they presented, um, that it sounded like pretty good news for this plan.
Great. Do you show a future like phase two, so they'd see that there's bigger plans, but we're not until we can finance those?
Don't think that would be beneficial.
Do you, um, and they then, okay, we asked for a million, they could come back and say, we're only giving 500,000.
That I don't know. That wasn't clear. I need to reach out. That was one of my questions.
I won't ask for too much and not get anything, but you ask, maybe they'll.
Yeah, well, it's also hard because, so the fund, the grant is funded through the lottery and the amount that they have every year is varies wildly. So in 2024, they have 34 million to give out, and in 2023, they had 14 million. Um, so we won't know until July.
I know Little League, we went down and spoke on behalf of the city. I mean, if we get soccer, you know, all these groups behind it um and apply, worth trying, right? Because, I mean, it's upwards of a million dollars of free money. And then after that, if it doesn't work, if they don't come back, then we can start looking at other options. But we probably don't want to go spend a bunch of this now. We're going to need it.
Just for clarity, if we were awarded a million dollars from the grant, we still would have to come out of pocket $900,000 to build this, correct?
Potentially, yes. Engineers' estimates are obviously barely that an estimate. It was 1.6 before any contingency. We could look at doing some of it in. I mean, when the time came, we could try to value engineer it. But you still have to, at the end of the day, deliver what you told the grant, or is that you're going to build?
And we could do fundraising. Maybe if we find that's where we engage the park committee and we get creative.
Timber that we, I mean, with timber sales, we have their means if needed.
Don't have timber. I mean, the the timber.
Be allocated for years.
The timber that it's marketable is owned by the water department, technically speaking, um, unless you wanted to sacrifice Vista Timber for this or something, but I wouldn't encourage that.
I mean, as a, like a safety net, a fallback, like we raise, try to get as much we can. Could you, I mean, can you go out for a bond or a user fee or anything for the application or after the application?
Good. And what we would do on the application is show that the ask is the million, the estimate is 1.8 million dollars, that the funding for that difference is funded by the city. That is going to show that they're contributing smaller amounts. So to me, it kind of looks more appealing because if you're getting a 1.8 million dollar park and they're contributing, rather than say, this park's going to cost us a million, and we want you to give us 100% of that minus 40% match. That just doesn't, to me, sell as well. But if it shows that we're we're vested into this project equally as much as they are, he invites better. But I would, I mean, I would recommend going for this. I think there's a strong desire in the Parks Committee to do that.
Dave, just to clarify, we can't commit unallocated funds, though, right? So in the grant application where we're saying, okay, we're going to meet you with this 40%, it can't be based on a hypothetical levy or bond, though, correct?
Do you, what I would recommend is that you would assume your worst-case scenario is debt. I would not put it on a bond or a loan. Just say that if you needed to, you would borrow that difference.
And they won't give it to you until you show all your funding.
But that's how I would submit the application. And then, you know, you're you've about seven, eight, nine months, maybe more, until you even know. I don't know when they actually.
September is when they award, and then you have two years from the date of award.
A year a year from now before you.
It would be September, if we apply in the new year, we'd be, uh, no, yeah, we'd know in September 2025.
I personally don't want to wait and do nothing until the money comes. So I would really like to look at some of the other smaller ones that are patch grants or $10,000 or maybe a pickleball court and look for some, look for maybe one at a time.
Well, I think it's really important that we focus on the Grabhorn project because this is a big grant. And it's, they've had three years to try to, two years previously to try to apply for it, and this is the last year. So if we don't go for it, we're going to lose out. And I think it's a very doable grant. You know, I know Mike Sykes uh has really been behind it, and he's been very successful with grant writing and also improving parks. So I think, you know, that and also, you know, working on Vista are going to be real priorities.
That sets it up for everything we have on the other picture we can get to down the road if needed. You can extend the parking lot, extend the road, you can do all that later still.
I just want to say that, for me, I agree because we also put a lot of time into it. And how many plans have we, has this gone through? So um, I think we can talk about it again, but to a blue, but I think this is the time.
Absolutely. And I think Ian's done a great job putting together everything for the Disc Golf. And I think Dave's spot on that people love that stuff. So we need to act.
Council Holmes?
Yeah, I was just wondering if Columbia County United, the soccer club, has been re-engaged on this? Um, similar to the arrangement we had with Little League for veterans? Have we re-approached that club for some sort of partnership or financial support for the soccer field?
Quite some time ago, they were brought to the table along with the Softball Association when this property was acquired to talk about their interest in having those fields. They were very interested in it. What I took from it, it could have changed many times by now because that changes every year for their staffing. But they were more interested if they could invest in turf on that site or something along those lines, but not necessarily the building of what you see. Um, but they would maybe take it to the next level if we guaranteed them use of it, which is challenging with a public park because it is a public park. And if you do something like that, then somebody has to maintain that turf. But they were engaged it a while, but not at this juncture. No, it's it's been at least a year.
I could see us, you know, going with this, this, and then if if we really want to go, we would approach them and say, you know, you can get a quote on turf and and really help if you really wanted to go that route. Seaside, Astoria, they all do it with their schools, um, but it is a big program. I mean, it's, um, but I would, I would entertain it. I would definitely get them involved, even if it's grass, and get them involved in money, just like they did with Little League. They're going to be the prime, a primary user. They've got money.
And grading it this way and just having grass left it until whatever at some point in the future. It would just be a space that people could go play kickball, or you could have the Little Leaguers doing T-ball, or you could have soccer. Anybody could use a grass field that's level and well-drained.
Only problem I have is if you're putting a lot of sprinklers into it with the idea of pulling those up and the cost can go up. But if you're just leveling it and planning, you can still dig it out at another time and put turf.
Yeah, and part of the 1.6 that I was telling you is a fully irrigated patient. That is something that we could do in-house to save money, or maybe we don't irrigate it at all. You just, it'd be dead grass during the summer to save a bunch of money. And then, because you can always add that in at a later date when you can pay cash for it. You don't have to have that coming out of the gate, so.
What do you want then, Dave, going forward? Like, um, you know, I think we're kind of feeling that I do agree. We do, I want to look at this grant and doing this big project, but what else?
Let's go to the. Sorry, these aren't quite in order. But we have been working on getting a conceptual bridge design going as well. Um, this is tentatively what that looks like down, having done their injuries. This is, this is a 10-foot wide bridge and sidewalk all the way to Concomly. Um, wood span over that, it would have the capacity to hold our lawn mowers or whatever. That came in a bit more expensive. It was a little over 600,000 for that whole thing, as you see. So I emailed him back and I said, what's what's this look like if we cut it down to a five-foot, just pedestrian? I'm curious to see what that difference be. I built some of these bridges in my past career where they were only about $80,000 apiece for a wood span. So I was shocked to see this this much. I'm just curious if that's because of the engineering or the weight load for that width and size that maybe, maybe if we down, downscale, and if there's a desire to just have it as pedestrian-only. If that drops it down to like a quarter million versus 600, to me, it's worth it. At least it gets you across that.
Is that just one quote or is that?
It's just engineer's estimate. That's that's not, but they did reach out to ultimately the manufacturer in the Pacific Northwest that does restructure bridges. There's not a big array of those contractors or vendors, so I, that's a pretty solid number.
What's the width of the one that was quoted by the engineer?
10 foot.
Okay.
We could go after grant money to help fund with this, can't we? Yeah.
The pavement, the, you know, connecting cities, I mean, you can try to find some connect city grants. Unfortunately, our city doesn't qualify as much as others. But I do think too, uh, community garden down there, you kind of have, is that if floods, good degree? But is a community garden okay to be flooded in the winter, on a short term?
Yeah, some of those, I don't know how well the garden would necessarily work if they wanted to do the raised beds. That would be a flood plain issue, but if they did it down at ground level, you'd probably be fine. But it does flood. Um, not all the time, but it's a year, once every couple of years.
Yeah, that would be one that we could try to fundraise for some of it.
In 2019, everything there flooded all the way in that lower baseball field, all the way up to the pitching mound. So, I mean, it does happen. It's not frequent.
If any of it is brick, you know, from ends, you know, and they, everyone buys their brick and gives their name on it on a, on the beginning of a bridge, you know. If any of it is brick, you know, from ends, you know, and they, everyone buys their brick and gives their name on it on the, on the beginning of a bridge, you know. Fundraiser to help.
We do, part of what I thought would help fund this, or actually I was hoping to fund the whole thing, is our footpaths money. We get the one percent of the state gas tax every year that's dedicated to our footpaths. Right now, I think we're running, we're shy, about three hundred thousand sitting in that fund, two fifty, somewhere in there. I thought that'd be a great way to do this. Plus, there was, there was a grant program that you researched not too long ago that we thought might be better for this than the path.
Yeah, I, I thought it would be, I remember what the organization is off the top of my head, but it was basically all about pedestrian connectivity, connecting different parts of the.
If you did use the path money though, because that, could that be a matching part, like you use a hundred thousand and?
That's what we're thinking. We just need to do some more research. This is new stuff, so we're just now getting this rolling, so.
I would like to see some more work on that, some numbers and seeing if we can find matching money. Because I think that would really connect it to.
What's the length of that? Hundred year. Scaled in the bottom right corner.
Yeah, the bridge dimensions, ten feet wide by fifteen.
Forty-five feet long.
Forty-five.
concrete abutments. Hole number six.
It's a long bridge. Um, we've gone through all of them, I believe. Oh, and then just this last one, which is.
Is there a reason for that, that it has to be hundred year to hundred year?
Nothing. No, it's more getting embedded into solid bank to get away from the edges.
I would imagine that's adding a lot of cost.
You're not, you're, you're still within the hundred year, I'm sure of it down there, but yeah, it's just getting it. They're fifteen feet away from the water's edge. Also, Doug is here tonight as the park supervisor. If you had any questions about what's going on out there, whoever he's here to answer questions.
Only a pedestrian, the mowing wouldn't be a big issue, you just drive around.
That wouldn't be a big issue.
You see an issue if we expanded some more holes along the, along the creek for disc golf into Grabhorn? In the trail or the path in the creek? There.
Go into the creek?
Yeah.
I might fall into the creek.
How far from a creek do you really need to be to be safe?
Are you talking about veterans or Concomly?
Veterans.
You can, you can fit some in there. Yeah, I've talked to Scotty a lot of shit about. Yeah, we actually, we as the city collectively agree that we don't want people down there. We're not encouraging people to go to the water because the E. coli levels are actually so high, we discourage swimming. So we don't create access on purpose. Here, the bridge right there is swimming hole, that's where everybody goes to. The rest of it, yeah.
We'll see a lot of disc go in there, I'm sure.
Yeah, but we, I did look at various routes and starting points at veterans near parking lots, near the roadways, utilizing a bridge. You know, that bridge really does activate parks. I, you know, I'm a, I'm a landscape architect by trade, so I feel very confident in saying you could easily get a rudimentary, like beginner level disc golf course between veterans and Grabhorn and even a hole or two on Concomly in the low area, no problem.
I think you can put some trees up here and there to add some interference too, so you have some angles. I don't, I think Dave said it's okay.
Trees, other, you know, man-made elements to increase the complexity and, and force people to move the holes in a certain way. Otherwise, it's just a flat field. The ones you see here are way, like, I went out there and I'm not a disc golf player, so I consider myself beginner. And I tried to throw these, those are all too long, those are all too long. So while you see five there, it's really more like eight or nine you could fit just there. So if the fields come and the basketball court comes years down the road, and I, I did the math, if you hold a hundred thousand dollars every year, it's gonna take you eighty years to do all these improvements. Anyways, as those improvements come online, some of those holes can move over to veterans or Concomly or.
And you have pickleball courts written in there, those are.
Yeah, a couple of things I wanted to point out from this exhibit. Regards to the disc golf, if you, can you see where Concomly is? You see the circle and the oak tree? And that orange buffer. So everything just above that to the creek, all of, all of that is city-owned property from those, those reaches to each end. So I think we could probably, that we get another four holes over there where to play through. And then, yes, this exhibit does show the proposed pickleball court location. This is something that Paul was here, he drew for us, and I think it is a good location. It's far enough away, the homes, to not be too much of a noise issue. That field, other than occasionally some soccer players, didn't get much use and I think it would be a good location. Some pickleball courts. We don't know the exact cost of that yet, something that can pursue, I'm gonna guess that's a hundred thousand right there, but I don't know, it depends on the quality of the surface that you want to create for that.
I would like to see us look at pickleball courts before the fad runs out, you know, and changes, you know, and be at the end. But are looking at the best location and the cost, you know, trying to determine where the best place would be. That could be multiple use too, that, that could be, eventually, if they don't work, you can put basketball court up near or on it or kids can use big rubber balls and play on them as well. So there's other uses. Four courts might be more than you need, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, obviously if you cut it in half, half the cost, so I mean.
Everywhere I'm going now, I'm seeing tennis courts turned into them and adding on in between them, I mean, everywhere you go, you're seeing them.
I believe that this is the size of one standard tennis court. To get a sense of reference.
Do you see where you have the blue line right next to hole number one? That whole green area, I think you could put a hole in two and throw it across the middle screen, give another little obstacle.
I think the exhibit you see here is, is for utilization for the Grabhorn hatch grant.
Yeah, like that.
It's showing, yeah, like, here, here's our, here's the, here's the boundary of the project itself.
So we're saying yes? Okay. So what we're.
Okay, so that being said, in regards to the little ones, little projects, you want to sit tight? See how the grant plays out, pay every penny for that? Do we want to say that the fifty thousand? The little stuff, we still want to move forward with some minor amenities or?
I'll, I'll, I'll just kick us off in, in terms of where my thoughts are. So given that the consensus is going towards Grabhorn and the reality is we're going to have to come out of pocket nine hundred thousand plus. I think for the money that we have now, I think we would be prudent to save while we work through the grant process. And I also think that we should, as mentioned earlier, share with our incoming city manager some of the ideas about how we set up a, a mechanization to intake donations. Help to, that identify the smaller things that we can get after through donations. And I would also like to have a city manager also explore other grant funding opportunities and how to leverage the Parks Committee in terms of fundraising. So that, that's where my mind is at.
I echo definitely, I think I'd like to work towards a Grabhorn grant and, and, but I also would like to look at the, the disc golf, how much that would cost, whether we can fundraise for it or, or we have enough ten thousand dollars to do it. And a pickleball court, finding out how much that costs. Because if we can find a grant that's partial or, or matching, then I might be willing to spend twenty-five thousand if we're getting twenty-five thousand as a match. And then we look at it though and make that decision. And the, and the bridge, I'd like to consider that as well, especially if there is some matching dollars as well. But not commit to any of those, but we could propose. The idea of saving, I'd like to look at the STC fees too and get a better idea of how much, when that's coming. But into nine hundred thousand dollars, a ten thousand dollar disc golf, I think we could probably figure out how to manage that. Money for that and get a lot of.
Just for clarity there though, we would not probably build that until Park was built.
Disco?
Disco.
Because it's part of the grant.
Yeah. It's what you're asking them to help build, that's the amenity that they're creating by this park or one of them.
So we're at least looking past September twenty twenty five.
We look at temporaries to get an idea of the layout, you know, portable ones or temporaries to see how it plays, see how, you know, it works a couple of months or even incorporate some of the areas outside of Grabhorn. Full-time. Permanent ones over there are more in veterans that are outside the grant.
If you're asking me, I'm gonna say yes, it's your property.
I mean, that's, we're talking two years before we'll see disc golf in there if it's waiting till the grant money. Boarding it, kicking it out. Least.
Yeah, we could put a little thought into that because, I mean, whatever you put in, you're probably tearing out. The direction of the construction. And if they were to do a site visit, see that you already have it or something, I.
Why you need the money for.
Exactly.
Maybe we can put some in veterans and then they'll.
And, and that's what I'm wondering, so Ree Jeff is getting ready to kick off.
If I might, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, so I don't want to underestimate the importance and potentially urgency of creating some sort of public access for Vista Park. Just given what we've gone through in terms of access potentially being limited. If we're not, like, I'm all in favor of prioritizing Grabhorn, but it does sound like, you know, we need to wait for the grant and we wouldn't really have an understanding of what that funding situation looks like until the September award of twenty twenty-five. So Dave, I don't know if it's possible for twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand to just make a couple of parking spots up off of Vista to, to establish public access at that point, so we don't have to go through, you know, establishing or claiming access again in the future.
You had twenty thousand viewpoint, what, what did that consist of? Clearing a little bit of a road and making a viewpoint or is there any parking in there?
Is there where?
Uh, Vista Park, Vista Property, that's the viewpoint.
Go to the main, all right, I think it's like a hundred and eighty-four thousand or something.
Oh, over here.
Yeah, the, the hill development's a hundred, park development's seven fifty, but viewpoint.
Actually, it's nine hundred and four thousand that they anticipated doing that. I think, I think where Kim is going, Kim is going with that though is getting the driveway cut in. Lumina Vista, I think that that would be a good thing to do at this juncture. That hasn't been completely sidelined yet. Supposedly going to be meeting with the property owners on Lumina Vista in the next couple of weeks. Now, he's telling me to be talking about the possibility of the gate, added access up there. But as a part of that, we'll work on getting our access established into there. So, yeah, I think we could do a, I don't know about a parking lot, but we could get a driveway into it.
Yeah, just something that creates a form of access point, so we don't have to re-establish that again.
I think the feeling is to continue to investigate and work on that and not on the backburner to see what it's gonna cost and what we could do.
And just, just to interject, I have had people approach me that want to donate significant dollars. Twenty grand. So, so, yeah, so I, I, I think that, you know, with that, I think we could easily get that established.
What I would recommend then is that there's fifty thousand, forty-eight actually, left right now in our capital fund to park improvement still to get through the remainder of the year. If we leave that available or that's an access at Lumina Vista or however we work through the remainder of the year, that available and then just keep working the rest of it, savings, something bigger.
That's actually the thousand objects, about till December or till next July.
Through the duration of this fiscal year.
So let's go back to Vista Park because that's like outside city limits off of Lumina Vista that we're talking about. So when we're talking about spending money, I'm looking at this through the lens of what's the greater good for the majority of the residents. And that park has been undeveloped for decades. And I'm not comfortable with allocating any money, parking spots in an area that doesn't really have a distinct plan, let alone we don't have the money for. That's not, that's not gonna benefit the majority of residents. I mean, if we're gonna put twenty thousand dollars, we should, I, I mean, I don't know, I would want to prioritize things that are going to benefit masses.
There's something though, I'm not up to speed on it, there's something about the county and the neighborhood. So Kim is saying we need to do something to prevent something else from happening.
And if I may, it is within city limits. That is a park within city limits. And so it will directly benefit all of the taxpayers. It is the largest parcel of land within our Parks Master Plan. So I think it would, we would be remiss to ignore it. It's, I think it comprises about forty percent of our parkland. And so creating a parking lots creates an access point to our largest park. So I don't.
And I tend to agree with that. I mean, I think the, you know, it is our forest park. It is eighty acres of forest land and, yes, there are not a lot of developed trails, but I, I mean, it has the best view. And it's like people need to be able to access.
We need clarity though of what Kim was saying.
I'm sorry.
That if we don't use, what will happen if we don't?
County's looking at making it a private road, so we would actually lose access to our property.
Okay, that's what I wanted to clarify.
That, that's the biggest thing is property owners want to gate the road, so we would no longer have access to the park.
My understanding is that the vacation did not go through with the county. They did not approve it.
I was gonna say, I don't know.
They did not disapprove it either.
They did not disapprove it either.
But if, but at the end of the day, the ci, the city will still have access if necessary, even if they put a gate up there. Yeah, but it's a park. It's not a developed park. It's, there's not any amenities up there. So for the sake of all of time, I think we should just table this one. Because I think there's a lot of.
Well, Dave is in the works with them. There is talks going on about access. And I, I think we'll just wait to hear from Dave as he works with county and the locals up there to see what are, and you'll come to us if something needs to be done. If there's a chance of us losing access, if we don't sign an access agreement, you'll bring that to us.
Yeah, that park has been on the radar since the day I hired on. The, the very first thing I was tasked with is coming up with a CIP value to do the development on that property. That, that has actually been relatively high on the radar for the eight years I've been here. It's just a matter of prioritization. Matter of going through what we're doing and getting all of the parks that are in our master plan, which this is one, prioritized and then figuring out how you're gonna get the greatest good out of all of your assets. Or if that is the creation of a small parking up there for people to access it from south and so be it. Those are directions, once again, that we're looking, council, to prioritize. But yes, it is a city park, it is where a lot of our acreage, for our parks, and that was a huge topic working through the master plan. It's getting the acreage counts up and that park is necessity to that. We've also exhausted a lot of work with the state to create a trail system. It was presented to council about two and a half or three years ago. There, there has been a lot of effort put into that.
Absolutely.
Never got to the point where we're ready to move forward till now.
And I do use it and I'd use it more if there was better access. But, and it's prioritized, yeah, I have a lot of other higher priority items, but I don't want to lose the access to it. I want it to be able to be used in the future. I'm not necessarily ready to spend a lot of this money, we have a lot of other priorities. And I do want, yeah, go ahead, Kelly.
Okay, so I have went to the county commissioner meetings where this topic of Vista has been discussed. And I think we've established, but just to be clear, there has not been a decision made on it. It's, I think we were left to, basically, the city was left to speak with the property owners to try to. I think we've established, but just to be clear, there has not been a decision made on it. It's, I think we were left to basically, the city was left to speak with the property owners to try to come to a resolution. And so I think Kim brings up a valid point. The other, what I'm hearing, and J J, correct me if I'm wrong, is that we do have private individuals who are willing to make an investment. Now, is that investment contingent upon or conditioned only upon it being used for Vista Park or can that money be used for other parks?
That's really just for Vista Park. I think you have a lot of neighbors that don't want to have a gate, that don't want to gate off the area to the public that use that park that are nearby. And they really believe that it is a park that we really need. We, we have, outside of the Crowns Allerbeck Trail, we don't have a lot of hiking options. And we certainly don't have any forested hiking options. So I, and I've been with this committee since the start in two thousand fifteen. So Vista has always been there. It's just a matter of coming up with a beginning so that we can actually begin to use it and then beginning to establish trails. The reason why Grabhorn is so important is because we've got a very strict time limit now to get a very large grant. That's why that's important, not because it's more important than other parks. It's just that, that the city has so little money, we've got to prioritize it and to, and to have individuals come up and, and want to write a check to do this really demonstrates to me that people do care about this park and for very good reason. We need forested areas that people can access, that can hike and that can enjoy nature. It's important.
So I just, okay, so it's an opportunity. So if you do have, if we do think that it's going to cost ten to twenty thousand to put a road in there or whatever, and we have private individuals who are willing to basically foot the bill for it, then I think it'd be a missed opportunity if we didn't do that. So that is something that we probably should get more information on, so we don't miss that opportunity.
Yes.
I'll drag this along, but, um, my suggestion is for fifty, to stay under the fifty thousand. Uh, just kind of spread the love would be like, for example, we mentioned gaming tables, ten thousand heritage veterans. The disc golf, I think that would also help, um, our purpose for Grabhorn. And maybe, um, just like J J said, there's three miles, everybody uses Crown Z. Maybe having a bench in a mi- a mile, so three benches, that would make six thousand. So we can just keep at that and then wait on everything else that we were talking about.
I would look at, if you do start with a priority list of those really small ones, like the picnic benches that you're looking at or a bench along a trail, do that program or maybe we can look at a program where people do pay for one of those and see if.
I think that's a, I think that's a really wise decision and I think it's very doable.
Talk with the new city manager of that, if there's someone in the city without putting it on someone's plate, but that is something you can look at doing. He may have some information on it. And look at doing those small ones with that. We're not having to.
And just to, just to interject one other thing, when I was with the Arts Commission in St. Helens, one of the, we, one of the ways that we got a number of benches built very artistically is that we worked with the local high school and the art department to actually design and build the benches. And when we talk and, and also bike racks. So, and, and we were very economical about it. One of the ideas that I came up with that we implemented, it came out great, was we did a bike rack made entirely of horseshoes, which was a lot of welding, but it really came out great. So I think people want to participate. I've certainly experienced that doing the things that I've done with the city so far. It's just a matter of, of, of getting people to get excited about it and get involved.
That, that can be something that can be done in the O M E C fabrication Fridays. I don't know.
Absolutely. I've talked to O M E C. We've talked about them helping out with signage. There are so many opportunities and it's just, you know, it's not that hard. People want to have a great community here. People want to be involved. We just need to give them reasons to do that.
You need, um, what else are you looking for? Anything else you were gonna add?
No, what I'm hearing tonight is to keep on the track of getting Grabhorn designed, get the application in. Have until April, we should be well ahead of that. This, probably by December, anyway, we'll have that submitted. We'll look to continue doing the small amenities with the forty eight thousand that's left, if you guys are okay with that. And, uh, other than that, we'll continue to watch for grant opportunities as they come up. Anytime they align with some, oh, we'll also keep moving forward on trying to lock in on a bridge design. Right now, we only have a contract to get the conceptual. If you guys are okay with it, I'd like to move forward with actually that design work. We can utilize our footpaths fund for that and not our parks revenues. I think that would be a big asset for us.
I think that's a great use of footpaths.
I know we have, I mean, uh, play structures. Um, I see grants for those from time to time and, and A D A improvements. If we see those out there, um, I would look to maybe adding those onto the list if we see some matching dollars.
At some point, yeah, you're, you're going to want to be thinking about that. And when we've done the play structure grants, typically what it is is, um, fifty percent match. Those, those structures are extremely expensive. I, I think we, with the match, had sixty or seventy thousand in the Miller Parks and that was only fifty percent of the cost. So we are going to want to start setting aside some money for veterans play structure because it's, it's aged and a lot of things are broken off of it. It's just not as fun for the kids anymore. And so at some point we want to do something. And I think when we do that, that's the time to start A D A compliance. You remove it, you put in the right structure underneath of it for that. And that could be a flagship play structure for us. It sets the tone for the future.
Do you have any on Meisner Park? Do you have any timeline there? Is any money going to be needed for that in this next budget? Well?
Yes, but we're not to that point yet. Still haven't got through the donation process. He knows that that is not going to be priority project. The, the concept that we've discussed is just getting privacy fence that he requested up and then allow, put in the access so people could enter it, but it wouldn't have the amenities other than maybe a portable restroom. They would have to walk into that location for the time being. We wouldn't build a, a lot or anything until we can, some of these other bigger projects done. He was, and he was completely okay with that.
Hey. Anything else?
Great.
Appreciate it. Um, thank you. Keep us updated. Hey. Uh, moving on.
Can I say, can I say one thing?
Yes, please.
From a Parks Committee standpoint, I, I would like to, um, maybe on an agenda item to look at some of these smaller pieces and sort of try to provide you all with a list of potential, um, public donation options. And, uh, maybe even like, uh, you guys don't have a mode to go out and ask the public for these things. So.
And just to, and, right, and just to inter. Right. We, we actually had a Friends of, of, of Parks or, or, yeah, years ago, but nothing ever happened with it. So I guess the other question would be, is that, is that something the city can do or is that something you try to set up a nonprofit to do? And I, I don't have the answer to that question.
We'll have to look and maybe you guys can discuss it as well.
That's part of what Friends of Scapus Parks was, was the nonprofit side of that to do fundraising and things. And a lot of that is still there, just waiting for somebody to pick that back up again. But I think that that could be a great objective for the Parks Committee to switch gears on now that some of this is behind us. We move on to that where you guys, because I know you had talked about grants. And so if there's different ways that he can fundraise, it'd be awesome.
Yeah, if you say we find money for a picnic table, then get with Dave and they'll give you a list of a few items that they think they would want and wear and you guys kind of go out and sell them or you, in the community together.
Okay. I'll add that to the list.
Well, there is, if there is something you see, Dave, um, in your last week or two and going forward that the Parks Committee could work on. If there's something you think, uh, let us know and we'll task them with it.
Probably revisit that next month's meeting.
Yeah.
Steps.
Yep.
Good.
In the meantime, too, we will look for some temporary disc golf.
Great. We get some bang for the buck there. Um, thank you, Paul. Hey, we, right now, we don't have anything still on the agenda for the September third, uh, council meeting. So we were entertaining the ideas.
Don't hold back.
Diego to Santiago to cancel this September third council meeting. You second?
I'll second that.
Second by Council Bailey, discussion. Our new city manager will be on board, but that will give him two good weeks before our first meeting to get to meet everybody. And so I'd entertain during those first two weeks, maybe if you guys can get with him, set up a time or call.
Yeah.
Um, get to bring him up to speed. Great. And then we'll meet back on September sixteenth, I believe.
I said one more thing. I just wanted to thank Dave for taking on being city manager during this time, as well as mowing the lawns, emptying the trash. I think you deserve a big round of applause. Thank you, Dave.
Do you have his plaque? Well, thank you all.
Paint him in green.
Right now, and seeing no further discussion, all in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Closed, motion carried. Hey, not much body in there. Calendar, we are on to, um, September second. City office is closed. It's Saturday in September, Farmer's Market, nine to two. Planning Commission's September, uh, twelfth at seven P M. You already knew ahead of time that the calendar doesn't have our council meetings. I was thinking, council meeting, September sixteenth, work session at six P M, followed by council meeting at seven P M. E D C meeting scheduled for September nineteen at noon, Parks and Rec at six P M. Other planning commissions, six at seven P M.
And two more weeks of movie night.
Two more weeks of movie night, Friday night. Uh, city manager, Dave Sukal.
Um, this will be my last meeting in this role, so I just once again want to thank you all for trusting me that it's been fun. An experience for sure. Definitely busy. The citywide, things are about to get chaotic. We knew the perfect storm was coming of all the construction projects and we're midstream of it. There's construction on Keys Road, Allan Road, we're about to close Smith Road, duration working on the pump station. There'll be night work going on there. There's going to be heavy dump trucks running through Veterans Park calling dirt from Re Jeff. Got a ton of stuff going on. Uh, Maple Street sidewalk project is pretty much done, other than the cable company needs to get off of some poles. So we can finish up that. We're hoping that happens before the kids turn to school, but I'm not a hundred percent sure if that's going to happen. So we may have to do some temporary sidewalks. Them, but, um, yeah.
Appreciate the letters going out on Keys Road, keeping everybody up to speed on that. Every, I've heard a few things throughout the community there thanking us for the information. And with Dutch Canyon Estates, the more we can help let them know what's going on, same with Smith Road.
Construction is never easy. Change brings a lot of predict to people and once things get rolling, they get accustomed to it. The new developments there, the new sidewalks are there, things always, it's always rough at the start, so. Thank you.
Uh, interim chief, Llewellyn.
Counselors, good afternoon. May you welcome back Aloha. It's a couple of things. Um, Sergeant Stevenson, uh, he retired on the first of August. He joined the Scapus Police Department back in, uh, September, back in two thousand nineteen. So he's, he's moving on to greener pastures for him. Um, we still have a sergeant spot open. I'm still trying to get applicants for that position. Hopefully one day we do get that filled here shortly. And I would love to have one of counselors for you to join the interview panel, since it's part of your police department too, so you guys can have your input as well. Uh, we still have our part timer from the Portland Police Bureau who just retired back, I believe, June. He's still progressing through the background application. I anticipate he will be here probably within earliest, late September or early October timeframe. Uh, wants to be a twenty hour employee, not a full F T. Uh, recently, uh, all officers in our police department just finished a twenty hour basic rifle course. Um, that was pointed by the St. Helens Police Department. That course was free and provided to them. So we went through that process. And last Friday, myself and a couple other officers from, um, Columbia County, uh, participated with crowd anti-control training with, um, the Portland Police Bureau, which is another free course. Um, going into that, uh, Portland Police Bureau, I reached out to them and they may be providing us with some type of, uh, crowd control management gear. Um, this is potentially, and this is all for free, by the way. I'm looking at this as possibly, I already reached out a couple of other stakeholders or sister, uh, law enforcement agencies of development type of um, Columbia County Rapid Deployment Team of Force. I have experience doing that with Washington State Patrol with sergeant there. And besides crowd management, if there's some type of large scale natural disaster, the inter-agency, um, team that will come together to provide civic services throughout the county. Of course, we have to go through our legal, develop M O U and things like that. We get to that. Um, but besides that, that's pretty much I have right now for the police department pending your questions.
Crowd control movies at the park that you had a.
They own it. They do such an awesome job. Oh, my gosh, they are so great.
Sold out last year.
That's right. Thank you, thank you.
Uh, chief, just so you're aware, the city of Hillsborough has been very generous with giving away things other police departments and that are less fortunate, shall we say, uh, and I do know a lot of people there, so if I can be of.
I'm just being budget friendly.
I mean, yes.
Negotiating. Responsible is what we call it.
Yeah, but thank you, counselor.
They have traditionally been very great.
Did I know? Another resource for me to look at.
Yes, the city of Hillsborough once gave us a sergeant to act as a chief and we have a longstanding history with the city and the city of Hillsborough through operative type arrangements.
Awesome. Thank you, Councilor. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Uh, Council Bailey.
Uh, just real quick on the, uh, parks discussion, uh, I've been doing a lot of riding lately and the Crown Z, it is worth noting that you know exactly where the city limit is, uh, the quality of that trail. Um, so y'all have done great work on our side.
Yes, you have.
Questions about, but Crown Z on these three, solid. No, thank you all for the time. The parks are great, but, uh, I just wanted to comment that I really do appreciate how well that, that whole trail line and then going into the, uh, air area has been.
Oh, Dave.
Counselor.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, um, so thank you, uh, Dave, for sitting in the seat and for being available to answer questions. Um, so really appreciate you and, and what you do for us. Um, Chief Llewellyn, uh, thank you for stepping into the role. Um, your officers have been providing wonderful service. I've had community members approach me where they've had to interact with the officers and commented to me about how wonderful they love our police officers and how kind and caring they have been. So thank you.
The hamburgers and.
Thank you, chief.
Um, Susan, um, I just want to thank you for all of your hard work that you do for us. Um, really appreciate it. How you manage it all is, um, really a trait. Um, I'd like to also thank Ian for all of your work on the, um, disc golf. Really appreciate and seeing the revision of the plans. So thank you for all of that hard work and we'll definitely hope to see that come to fruition here soon. And, um, other than that.
Uh, Counselor LaFrance.
Yeah, just like that, oh, Marissa, Dave and Chief Llewellyn, thanks for stepping in roles that you didn't think were. So, uh, thanks Parks Department. Thank you Maintenance Department. You guys all do great work. Susan, Charlotte, you forgot Charlotte.
Charlotte is the brain behind Dave.
You all do great work.
Appreciate it. Counselor Holmes.
Yeah, no, just again echoing, um, appreciation for Dave. Um, I think, uh, when you stepped in, there were a few complicated things that you fearlessly took on and so uh, appreciate really true leadership there in that until we can get the new city manager in. Um, I'll take advantage of J J being in the room. Thank you, J J, for all the successful, uh, movies in the park. I've had COVID the last two Fridays. I hope to be COVID free by this Friday and, uh, get to come and enjoy it. But, um, what you and Jeff bring uh, to the community each August is, is really invaluable and it's a great, uh, community building event for us. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Santiago.
Yeah, and I'd like to thank, uh, Miko, thanks. Thanks to staff, uh, for you guys are doing a great job, um, always. Thank you, Ian and Paul and the whole committee for these, uh, plans in partnership with, with Dave. And interim chief, great job. And you and your team, I know what you guys all do with short staff, small staff, and then do hot dogs, you know, on Fridays. So I don't know how you guys do that, but great job. Um, Dave, I know you, you took on not only, uh, the city interim uh, position, but also your job. And so you have a missed beat and I, I appreciate it. Thank you. Um, great job, Charlotte, with your proposals. Um, can't wait to hear more about the, the grants. So that's all I have. Oh, are you going to share about that?
Yeah. Council President Miller.
Um, I'm trying to make this a little faster. Thank you to everybody. Uh, we just have, we just have a, we have a great team and it's, I think it's really starting to come together really well. Um, Lieutenant, or excuse me, interim chief, uh,
Um, Lieutenant, or, excuse me, interim chief, uh, Fellin, um, thank you very much for taking on the, uh, role of interim chief. And I do want to point out that I do listen to the radio, and, uh, for whatever reason, there has been a very significant noticeable increase in the activity by the police department, self-initiated activity that I've noticed. They're doing more traffic stops, they're getting out there, doing more. And that is really one of the things that I wanted to see, because those lights on the side of the road and the activity really do help the tour and wave the flag and, uh, let our community know that our police are out there. And that is, uh, I think, an uphill battle that we've had for, um, some years now. And so just seeing that activity start to increase just over the last month or so has, um, been really great. Uh, Dave, thank you very much for all of your work and, um, taking on some hard decisions and, and getting some things done. Um, again, JJ Parks team, um, your dedication, your work is, uh, very recognized, as you would say. And Charlotte, thank you, you're like the, we'll call you the queen of contracts and grants. I will bring you a whole tiara or something at the next, thank you. So yes, thank you, and Susan, thanks for being the, the, uh, master of the thermostat back there. I'll just leave it at that.
Yeah, thank all of you again, thank you, Dave, for stepping in and, and really keeping me up to, to speed the last couple of months. Perspective, it's great to learn, um, I really appreciate it, all of you. It's hard, I love talking about the parks, it's something I'm really vested in and want to see done. I'm sure it's hard for seven people in, in parks to come together with all different ideas and, and so hopefully you guys can come up with something and, and make us proud, thank you guys for that. Um, we do have a, uh, school is coming back into session in the next week or two, so do, please drive safely out there and watch out for the little kiddos. Um, we do have a city quarterly county dinner, city-county quarterly dinner coming up, October twenty-second. We're looking at senior center, so put that on your calendar, I'm trying to come up with a menu still. Um, so let Susan know if you're interested in attending that. Appreciate it, and again, elections are coming up, so get ready for those, signs out in the yards again, um, right around the corner. So other than that, that's all I have for tonight, uh, meeting.